I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if you can take the time for a moment of silence, and please remember Chuck Ennering, a longtime volunteer of West Milford, who was very involved in our community, who passed away today. Please rise for Flag Sealer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, The Herald News, The Suburban Trend, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, and Cable Vision of Warwick, and posted in the administration building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Romeo.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Colquhoun?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Garino?
Mrs. Fritz?
Here.
Mr. Upshins?
Here.
Mr. Stillman?
Here.
Mrs. Bearden?
Here. Mr. Garino and Mrs. Romeo both called their end. We bring the attendance report. Dr. Adams?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our February meeting. We're going to start off with our local VFW. Mr. Johnson is here to help pass out some awards for our students who won the essay contest for the, either the Voice of Democracy contest or the Patriots Den. They have some nice awards for you, and on behalf of the school district, I have some certificates of appreciation as well. So, in case I forget, congratulations and thank you very much.
Like, the VFW, for about 75 years now, has been giving out awards for Patriots Pen, which is a contest, a written contest by the junior grades, and the Voice of Democracy, which is a performance program where they have to actually record and send in the recording of them giving their paper. The National, over the year, spends about $4.6 million on the scholarship for these kids. And it's a great program. This is our first year for the Patriots Pen, and we assume that those kids that are in that group will stay with us all through high school. And it's a very good program, and the participation has been very good. Thank you, Mr. President, for giving us this time to make this award. For the Patriots Pen, Ava Murphy. Goodies. First, you get something to hang on your wall, Patriots Pen Pen, and a plaque. Veterans of Foreign Wars, the United States, and the Missouri Youth Essay Certificate of Merit to Ava Murphy for an outstanding young spokesman, spokesperson for the future. First place in the Patriots Pen. More importantly, a little check to go with it. And the VFW Pen, which I know you cherish. Thank you very much. Chloe Rigbank? Bridgebank?
She's here.
Jennifer Sheng?
They're getting checks.
No? Those two were in second and third place, and they will all get the same awards. For the VOD, the Voice of Democracy, which are the older kids, the top prize in the Voice of Democracy is a $30,000 scholarship to the national winner. And everybody from each state gets at least $1,000 to $2,000. Plus, they all get a free trip to Washington for a couple of days, all paid for by the VFW, and they get to perform their presentation in front of the whole country. So, our first-place winner is Anna Brand. And we have for you Cherish, money, and your certificate. Are you a senior?
Yes.
Okay, so we won't see you next year. But encourage all the kids in the, that are coming up, to join up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ashley Wardlow? Something to hang on your wall, your certificate. Again, it says, Voice of Democracy, Certificate of Merit, Ashley Wardlow, Outstanding Spokesperson for Freedom, second place, Voice of Democracy, and a check.
Thank you.
Madison, I hear. We'll make sure that these, we'll stop by the school. Is Karen Johnson here today?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. We have an award for Karen. Karen is our liaison to the school, and she does all the work. She gets the kids to write the program and brings them to us, and she's been an invaluable representative from the school to help us out. So, presented to Karen M. Johnson, which happens to be my sister's name, not my sister, for meritorious and distinguished service in furthering the aims and ideals of the veterans of foreign wars of the United States, given this day Commander Pat Lockman, Assistant John Trojanowski.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you to the VFW for all their support for our students and our schools. Thank you, Karen.
By the way, all these members, they live in town, all the VFW members do, and all their kids went through your school system, so.
Well, we appreciate your support.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Moms and dads, if you want to leave now, you don't have to stay the rest of the board meeting. But congratulations again.
Thank you.
So, moving on, the MACAPIN update. We have a couple of agenda motions on this agenda this evening for official transfer of about a dozen or so teachers from the elementary schools to MACAPIN. This list is inclusive of general education, special education, phys ed. We have a social worker on there. There may be additional transfers in the spring when we figure out our related arts schedules with art and music and those types of things. But that's typical of what we do every year. We do those schedules in June, so you might see additional agenda motion later in the school year. And lastly, we also have Mr. Citro set up the parent orientation meeting. We're going to get some notices out to our community, but it's going to be officially on Thursday, May 7th. There's going to be a parent orientation night. And MACAPIN is going to be for 6th and 7th grade, which is a slight change from the last time we met. So, the parents are going to meet together in the auditorium and then break off into groups. 6th grade will go to one wing, 7th grade will go to another wing, and they'll meet with different teachers. All right? We are also scheduling our student activity nights for 5th and 6th grade, also for May. The exact date and time will be probably for the next board meeting. Okay, in front of you, I put some subtle signage up here today in front of the podium here. The district, West Milford, our district was recently named, one of three districts in the state of New Jersey, to be named a State District of Character, which simply means that all of our schools are schools of character, and our district is as well. So, like I said, this is one of three districts statewide to receive this honor, and there's only a handful more nationwide that receive this honor. This is through Character.org. So, thank you, Board of Education, for all your support over the last couple of years, financial support. Thank you to our administrative team and our teachers. Most of all, thank you to our students, because they're the real people of character in the district. So, we appreciate everybody's effort. Next up, we recently received a Homeland Security grant. It's called Stop the Bleed. We typically don't speak a lot about our security and safety measures. We speak about those behind closed doors. We don't typically advertise all of our safety initiatives, but we received a Homeland Security grant for, I think we received 50 kids. They're called Stop the Bleed, so we're passing them out to our schools. It's what you might, it's tourniquets, it's scissors, it's gloves, it's all the things you might typically need in a kit if somebody had a cut or was bleeding excessively. So, it's pretty hardcore. We have, I think, 50 to distribute around the district. All the schools will get some, central office, transportation, the athletic trainers will get some. So, this is a nice grant through, I think, UMDNJA. All right? And again, that's something we can easily share. Next up is the monthly progress toward district goals. We discussed this briefly in Education Committee last month, and we'll probably discuss it again next month in Education Committee. But as we transition from a K6 elementary school to a K5 elementary school, we're taking this opportunity not just to take a look at MACAPIN as a 6-8 school, but also look at our elementary schools, how do they look as a K5 school, which is a much more traditional elementary grade span. And we are looking at redoing our elementary report cards for next year. We currently have your traditional report cards, letters and numbers. We're considering moving to more of a standards-based report card, which is something you see in many districts around the state and the region. And lastly, we may be switching from a quarterly report card schedule at the elementary levels to a trimester, which will be, means if you're in a K5, you could potentially go from seeing four report cards this year to three next year. So, if each mark period is extended by three weeks or so, you can stretch that out. So, nothing's official yet. We're still working on it. We're still working on the rollout. It may not be K to 5. It could be K to 3 initially, and then eventually K to 4 and K to 5. So, looking forward to more discussions about that. And Mr. Renner?
Good evening, everyone. Our students have been busy this month and are busy preparing for next month's events. Before I begin, I would like to congratulate the students, staff, and administration on being named a State District of Character. West Milford students show their character by giving back to their community. For example, from January 14th to February 14th, each department in the high school collected donations to donate to the local food pantries in the Fill the Bus Campaign, where the students running the campaign were able to fill a school bus full of donations. On January 31st, MACAPIN students watched their teachers compete in a series of events in their annual Give a Goat Night, where proceeds were donated, or were used to buy goats to donate to villages in need around the world. This Friday, February 28th, many MACAPIN students will take part in the annual Rock-a-Thon. Who knew that rocking in rocking chairs could make a difference in the world?
That's always such a great.
In addition, art students are looking forward to their annual Empty Bowls Night on March 18th, where you can enjoy soup in a handcrafted bowl made by an art student. Proceeds goes towards the local food charities. On January 31st, the ASVAB test was administered to the high school students willing to take it. Also, on February 12th, the Guidance Department hosted a college panel night, where students were able to talk to college admissions advisors about the admissions process and what makes a good college applicant. These are just a few ways the high school Guidance Department helps students make their way towards future education. Also, on March 19th, students who want to learn more about being safe online can attend Digital Citizenship Night, where they can learn about being a good citizen on the Internet and leaving a positive digital footprint. Many high school students are preparing for this year's high school musical, Anything Goes. They are performing March 12th to the 14th at 7:00 p.m., and tickets are on sale now. Our winter athletes are doing great, as many advance towards finals in the end of their season. Tree Lightning has recently taken second place at the Reach the Beach National Competition. The bowling team this year was able to qualify for state championship, finishing their season with a 12-2 record. Both boys and girls winter track teams did great at their state sectional championships. In boys' basketball, Kevin Dorakely reached 1,000 points, and dance team recently took 11th place in the nation at their competition. The boys' fencing team also reached their best record in 10 years. Way to go, Highlanders. Are there any questions?
I don't think you gave us a great report tonight. Thank you.
What time is the Empty Bowls? 5:30?
5:00.
Yeah, it starts early.
Is that it? All right. I hope everybody has a good evening.
You too. Take care, Brian.
Director of Education, Mr. Novak?
I'm just going to jump in where Brian referenced a little bit about Digital Citizenship Night. We are going to be hosting our event on March 19th. This year, we're going to have a little bit of a different look to it, where we are combining the fundamentals from our Digital Citizenship Night with the themes that we have used at an event called Safe Night over the years. We combined our two committees, and our theme this year is called Building Balance. We're really going to make the connection between those activities and the amount of time that our students are spending with devices and online and the types of things that they are doing with it with mental health awareness. And it's the first time we've taken that sort of approach. Digital Citizenship Night has always been a staple in our community, so we are keeping that title for the event, but we're really looking at it as a wellness, as a wellness night. We are going to be doing our raffling of Chrome devices, whether it's going to be a Chromebook or the newer sort of Chrome tablets that are out there. We're also going to be raffling off some of our experiences that, from the first year of our speaker, we started calling them what, Natural Highs, when we had Matt Bellis come and present that, the things that kids can do to be safe in a positive way. We'll be raffling off members, or weeks to camps and a number of the things like we have in the past. So, it's going to be a great night, and our registration form is going to go out via Honeywell tomorrow. It's also our first year that we're going to do an all-digital form. In the past, it's been a paper form that has gone out and have to come back and get collected. We're going to use Google Forms this year and see how that process goes. We're hoping that it'll streamline and, you know, expect a number of Honeywells from me going forward. And that's it for me tonight, and I'm going to introduce Dr. McQuade, who's going to talk about the transition program at the high school.
So, for the Board of Education, tonight, we have a presentation by Mrs. Nina Pierceall. She's our supervisor of Special Services for preschool to 21. She will be, she joined our team, our administrative team, in the spring of 2019. Not only does she supervise our elementary programs and our climb and autism and work with our students with disabilities in that lower age, but she also services students that are in our transition program, 18 to 21. So, she, I'm going to turn it over to her, so that she'll get the presentation going and explain a little bit more about it.
Good evening. I am Nina Pierceall. I'm the supervisor of Special Services for West Milford Township School District, and I am joined tonight by Ms. Kathy Mendes and Ms. Samantha Foder, both are special education teachers in our transition programs. We are very excited to be able to speak to you tonight about our transition programs with a focus on our 18 to 21-year-old program. So, a little background as to why there's a need for this program and how we came to where we are today. We follow NJAC, the New Jersey Administrative Code for Special Education, which provides us regulations that we must follow. Within there, it does say that districts must provide services to individuals aged 3 to 21 who are eligible for special education and related services. So, when we look at eligibility, eligibility is a three-pronged criteria, meaning that students must have a disability, that disability must have an educational impact, and so much so that a student requires special education and related services. So, when we think about school-aged students, ages 3 to 18 typically, that preschool through high school, you can understand the educational impact, but what does that mean for students who are 18 to 21? If we look at their non-disabled peers, typically, once they've reached their high school graduation, they are out living independently, they're employed, or they are at a post-secondary experience. And so, we're looking at, do our students have the skills to be able to do that? Or if not, do we need to continue to support them and give them those transition skills to be successful with that? Prior to opening up our program, we still had an obligation to meet student needs through free and appropriate public education for ages 3 through 21. And so, we were sending students out of district as tuition students into other programs. And as a frame of reference, an average tuition cost is $75,000 per student per year, and that does not include transportation, which is an additional cost of about $12,000 to $15,000. So, there is certainly a cost benefit to the district of having a program here in West Milford. And so, several years ago, West Milford looked, they did their research, they looked at other programs, both public and private, to see how are we servicing students ages 18 to 21? And they went out, they gathered the information, and then in 2017 and '18, Dr. McQuade and West Milford, with the support of the Board of Education, opened our 18 to 21 program. So, if we consider, like I said, how we're moving and what we're looking at into those 18 to 21 years, we certainly have to look at transition in the high school years. We do have a Career Awareness and Community Living 1 and 2 class. It is an elective that is supported by the IEP team, that is taught by Mrs. Samantha Foder. Through that, we are looking at our foundational skills, like I said, in terms of the independent living, post-secondary experiences, and employment. Some of the ways that we're teaching our students those skills is through the Cove. If you're unfamiliar with the Cove, it's a shop that is available at the high school. It's really neat experience. There are snacks, there's coffee, there's food, there's West Milford apparel available for both students and staff to be able to go in and buy. And our students in our transition program run that, run the Cove. They are responsible for stocking the Cove, for the money transactions, so it's those foundational skills that we're hoping to teach them. We also teach them through Community-Based Instruction, or CBI, which is then taking those skills and applying them out into their natural environment, which in this case would be out into the community. And we also have Structured Learning Experiences, or SLE, which are job site experiences. And in order for our staff to be able to teach those, they do require specialized training. Ms. Mendes is SLE-trained, Ms. Foder is just finishing her SLE training, actually, as we speak, and so we are very fortunate that we will have two staff here at West Milford who have that additional training. So, if we look at our current program, right now, we do have seven students who are enrolled in it. On the right-hand side, you'll see a sample of their schedule, what their day looks like in that program. They have an altered schedule. They come in periods three, and it's for their physical education. So, again, at this age, they are adult-age students, they've had their high school experience, so we are, we're still required to provide physical education for them. So, we're looking at what would they, those skills that they would need as they are living independently. So, some examples that we have for physical education are martial arts, we have yoga, they collaborate with some walking and some of those other health components as well. They then have a lunch period, which is important, because then the remainder of their day, they are spent out on the job site. This is an example for one day. We might have students working at Goodwill, also some students at Jo-Ann's Fabric or BYO Laundry. They rotate through these job sites. That way, they get a sampling of different jobs, they know what their interests are, what their skill set is. We currently have eight different job sites that our students rotate through. Some are paid and some are unpaid. When they return back to the school, they do participate in a reflection of their learning, what they feel like they still need work on, and any time that's remaining, we work on those skills. That way, when they go out again tomorrow, you know, they have a more positive experience. And then through our program so far, we've had five graduates, and I would like to turn it over quickly to Mrs. Mendes to introduce actually one of our graduates.
Hello, everyone. I would like to introduce Destiny Garrity, who is a former SLE student, and she has a few words to say about her success from this program. Destiny?
Hello, everyone. Hi, everyone. If you don't know me, I'm Destiny Garrity, and I graduated last year from the West Milford High School. After I graduated, I honestly was scared out of my mind and had like lots of anxiety attacks, because you don't know if you're going to like do well, or you don't know like what's going to happen to you, basically. And, but another part of me was really excited to be free from high school and do whatever the heck I want to do. So, that works. But mostly nervous, because, yeah, what I just said, because I won't have like the guidance that I used to have when I was like younger till like high school. But now, looking back, it was the best decision I ever made in my entire life, because now I work at the ShopRite Bakery and training people, too, which I thought I would never do in like a million years. And it's all because of the transition of employment class, and of course, of my amazing teacher, Ms. Mendes, because if it wasn't for her and the class, I would have never made it in the big world and be as confident as I am now. It really teaches you how life skill really works and what opportunities you can really have if you put hard work into it. And when I was in high school, I always wondered, why was this lady so tough on me than the other students in the class? And now I know why, because Ms. Mendes knew that I would be successful, and most importantly, she never gave up on me. And I hope that this program will be so successful for other students like me in the years to come. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
So, thank you, Destiny. And certainly, you know, in hearing Destiny talk, of course, we're teaching students foundational skills, but to hear her have that confidence in going out, you know, obviously speaks volumes. And we also have a video that we'd like to show you, which has some more information on our program as well.
I just want to say something to Destiny. Destiny, I visit ShopRite Bakery quite often, and you're there, and you've always been delightful and helpful and knowledgeable, and I'd rather have you serve me than some of the other women there. So, thank you. Thank you.
We all have so many transitions in our lives with many more to come. Some are planned, and others take us by surprise. Planning is a key element in transition and tends to make the process less stressful and more exciting, and we get fewer surprises and have more control. Graduation from high school is a big transition that we see coming for years. However, the path isn't always clear, and with a child with disabilities, more coordinated planning may be required. Our transition planning process here at West Milford High School's Career Awareness and Community Living and Transition to Employment 18 to 21-year-old programs are designed to assist the student in reaching his or her goals after high school graduation. The process typically begins with Career Awareness and Community Living Courses 1 and 2. Community-Based Instruction, or CBI, is an integral part of students' learning. CBI is educational instruction in naturally occurring community environments, providing students real-life experiences. The goal is to provide a variety of hands-on learning opportunities to help students acquire and generalize needed skills to be part of their community.
When I get my paycheck, I will save it for my family and stuff.
The Career Awareness and Community Living 1 and 2 courses and transition program at the West Milford High School are aligned with the New Jersey Core Curriculum Standards for 21st Century Life and Careers. for Twenty-First Century Life and Careers. The goals and objectives of the program are presented across all grades and content areas. Every teacher and related service staff are mindful of our collective goal of post-secondary success for our students, a fulfilling future conceived by the student or the student with support and guidance from teachers, parents, administration, and community members. Students who have not yet met their transition goals may be eligible to participate in the Transition to Employment Ages eighteen to twenty-one program. Here, they will learn through supervised structured learning experiences, or SLE, at various sites in our community. SLE provides students the opportunity to practice skills needed to gain and maintain employment. In an effort to prepare our students to lead healthy, physical, and active lives, they participate in yoga classes and adaptive martial arts outside of the school setting in order to promote lifelong and inclusive physical activity and recreation. Our transition program has six primary components: transition classes, assessment, person-centered planning, community-based instruction, coordinated student support, and development of agency linkages. Among many other topics, our transition classes engage students at age-appropriate levels regarding academic skills needed to meet post-secondary goals, career awareness, experience, and preparation, community involvement, post-secondary education planning, financial literacy, IEP awareness, independent living, and self-advocacy. Transition assessment is ongoing and allows the team to determine appropriate instruction for the students to meet their goals and address questions and concerns pertaining to the transition planning. The planning process puts the student and family at the center of this transitional time. We identify if students' strengths, preferences, and interests are late, and build the goals in all activities around those crucial factors. Our CBI experiences include various on- and off-site opportunities that aim to enhance students' transition preparedness through service learning projects, real-world life skills, job shadowing, volunteering, unpaid work experiences, college visits, and other meaningful activities. A unique feature of our program is our ability to coordinate with all members of the teaching staff and related service providers to coordinate student support.
I'm a student from BYO Laundry. The kids come in for a training program in professional skills. We teach them how to handle a car, how they use it, how they use the washers, the dryers, the sweep, they wipe off all the machines, the countertops, the floors. I think it's very good for them, is teaching them how to possibly do the job before they get out of this program.
Hello. I'm Eric from BYO Laundry. On behalf of myself and our warm, friendly team, it's truly a pleasure having badly engaged staff, and most important, the wonderful students in the West Milford High School Career Awareness Class. We look forward to the weekly visits for our laundry staff, who they are welcomed as members of the BYO family. We take great pride in helping them understand how they can be valuable members of the workforce, reinforcing how their strengths are enabled to contribute and earn as they transition out of high school. BYO Laundry is fortunate to be able to serve the West Milford community, and this fantastic program is just another way to show our support. Thank you for the opportunity.
As part of a student's transition plan, connections with the community must be made. There are agencies that offer support and consultation in the areas of employment, life skills and community living, recreation and leisure, community participation, advocacy and support services, and medical and other health-related needs, as well as post-secondary education and training, and financial support and services. The child study team may facilitate and initiate content as appropriate. The students have access to a fully functioning kitchen and laundry area that all staff utilize for a wide range of activities. Students prepare hot and cold food, learn general kitchen and electrical safety, practice food safety and hygiene, and learn about healthy diets. The Cove also serves as a venue where students and staff can purchase snacks and West Milford apparel. Managing, stocking, and maintaining the Cove is a way to integrate all academic subjects and essential life skills. Several of our students have acquired jobs in our own community and high school after completing our program. The students have been recognized two years in a row for their promising practices by Character.org. Two of our students have also been awarded the Exceptional Employee of the Year Award for Passaic County at the Dare to Dream Conference at William Patterson University. The West Milford Transition Program continues to help special-needs students develop the knowledge and awareness that they need in order to be successful and fulfilled adults, with a particular focus on self-awareness, self-determination, responsibility, and becoming an effective self-advocate.
Thank you for all you do!
I would just like to also introduce Joe Kroniak as a former SLE student, and two of my current students are here, Megan, the star of the show, and Kate O'Neill. Thank you so much for coming.
So, I'm actually, I'm very glad everyone was able to watch the video and not able to watch me at that point, because I'm standing here with a goofy smile, because obviously, there's so much to be proud of through the program, and we certainly are. We have a lot of, you know, hashtag WM hometown pride with the program. As you saw through there, we've been recognized two years in a row through Character.org for a promising practice of our Highlander Helpers, which is our service learning program. I was actually just with Ms. Mendez's class, and they're preparing a service learning for our Transportation Department to thank them for all that they do, keeping us safe and driving them to and from their job sites. To, as well, two of our students, as you saw, have been recognized as Passaic County's exceptional employees through Dare to Dream, which is a huge accomplishment. Several of our students have gained employment. And just in terms of coming full circle, just as we went out to look at programs, now we're the exemplar. This year alone, we've had four districts come and collaborate with myself and the entire team in terms of looking at our programs. So we had Pompton Lakes, Jefferson, Kinnellon, and Ridgewood come and look at our program as they're looking to open up their own program. So with that, we certainly thank you all for the time, and I'll turn it over to the board if there's any questions.
And real quick, Mrs. Pierce, I just wanna thank Mr. Joe Jordan for the video, because it was really excellent. So I just wanna publicly thank him for all of his work on the video for us.
Absolutely. Yes.
Just a comment, I mean, I commend you all and your team. I mean, this kind of a program doesn't just happen, so it's very obvious, your education and the amount of work that goes into pulling all of these programs and coordination off, it looks great.
I'm pretty sure, and I, I don't know how far it went back, but I can remember years ago, when the Cove first started under Denise Drexler, and she was really the one that initiated this kind of transition program with going out there and getting kids jobs, and, you know, I think she deserves some credit, too. So, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the difference of the program then versus now was, the programs that were in place prior were only for grades nine to twelve.
Right.
And we were not, we had our students that needed additional program at a district versus now, we, we are servicing those students. But I do give, there's, there's been a lot of people, I think, over the years involved.
Wonderful, yeah.
I, I hear rumor has it that Dr. Anna Moon likes to call the other calls.
Oh!
I've heard other people do, too.
You charge them, right? You're charging them.
You won't mention any names. So you're doing an excellent job, and this is just, it's wonderful to see the video and put together so that people can see exactly what we're doing for our students. Thank you so much.
That was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I put all my charges on the Athletic Department credit card.
Did they take credit cards?
These are our kids who, if you notice in the break room, we have some, usually some pastries or cookies. These are presented by Mrs. Mendez and her students every week or every month.
So you're the ones we blame for all the talent.
Thank you again. Thanks.
Mrs. Francisco?
We have the minutes from the January meetings reorganization, January 21st and January 28th, good for consideration.
We need a motion?
Okay, I'll move the minutes of the January meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Does anybody have anything on the minutes? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Under my report, I don't have anything tonight. I have some reports under the committee, so I'll go over that at that time, and we'll move right into the public comment. This portion, this portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on the agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of thirty minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the thirty-minute time period transpires. All members of the public, or public speaking during the public comment, speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation. If appropriate, issues raised by the members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and are responsible before The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public.
Seeing none, I make a motion to close the public comment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
All right, we just have two minor, just have two minor edits to the agenda here. First, we have on page six, Education, number, Resolution Number Seven, we're gonna add two hips. The first one is number two thousand twenty slash E dash thirteen, and it's gonna be substantiated. And the other one is gonna be two thousand twenty slash H eleven, and that is also gonna be substantiated. And then, on page nine, Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution Number Thirteen, the date is retroactive from December twentieth, two thousand nineteen, not twenty. Harry, you should have it ready.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Education, Mrs. Guire.
Okay, well, there are six items, and I'd like to read one and two, but I like to move to approve items one through six, and seven will, is the hips, and that'll be done after executive session. Resolution one, whereas the study of music contributes to young people's development through heightened skills in listening, reading, self-expression, and creativity, and whereas music education in the schools includes a broad range of types of music and active musical experiences, and whereas music and the other arts significantly, significantly enhance the morals and quality of the school environment, and whereas it is stated a Whereas, the National Association for Music Education has designated March as Music in Our Schools Month, focusing on the theme "Music Changes Lives." Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of West Milford Township endorse the observance of Music in Our Schools Month as an opportunity to support the purposes and practices of music education and encourage as teachers, parents, students, and all citizens to participate. The Board of Education of West Milford School District, for its own part, rededicates itself to the maintenance of a music education program that will be relevant to the needs of the children placed in its care and will reach and positively influence each child, and that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the public meeting of the West Milford Board of Education held on February two thousand twenty. Then we have, then we have number two. Whereas, art education contributes powerful abilities. Art education teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities. Art education gives students a deeper understanding of world's cultures, values, and beliefs. Art education reinforces and brings to life what students learn in other subjects, and art education integrates student learning in art production, art history, art criticism, and aesthetics, philosophy, and, whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including arts and experiences in all students' education, therefore, be it resolved, that support should be given to art educators as they attempt to strengthen art education in their schools and communities. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed that March be observed as Youth Art Month, focusing on the theme "Take a Journey Through Art." For Township School District, and that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the public meeting of the West Milford Board of Education held on through six.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I just wanna remind everybody that March twenty-sixth is our all-district ban, and if you can come out that night, it's a wonderful night to see how your child will progress once they hit that Highlander ban, and it's a great night of music and experiencing the art in the, in the cafeteria. Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Guire?
Yes.
Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mr. Ochinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Colquitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Personnel, Mrs. Fritz?
I would like to move items one through twenty-nine on the agenda, and items
I, I'd like to just take note and And I'm really excited to see the names of the, of the staff that's going to be moving over to Macapin, and looking forward to the great things that they're going to be doing there.
As well as Mrs. Driver, Patricia Anderson.
Oh, yes, Patricia, yes, Patricia Anderson also, yes.
Wait, you got another one. Mrs. Wink.
Oh, Mrs. Wink, oh, yes, I didn't see Mrs. Mrs. Wink is on the hand carry. That's thirty, that's motion number thirty. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Fritz? Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ochinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Colquitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Guire?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Operations and Finance, Dave, did you hear that?
Yes, I'd like to move items one through eight under Operations and Finance.
It's not roll call?
Oh, wait, wait, I have a question. On number five, Environment Plan, is that gonna change under Murphy's new law, laws?
No, this is in a federal
Oh, okay, okay.
We have four hundred three and four fifty-seven claims, and the RRS is required to be taken.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Ochinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
You have to go each motion, Dave.
Okay. I'd like to move item number nine under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Francisco?
Mr.... Mr. Ochsinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
To move item number 10 under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
I'd like to move item 11 under Operations and Finance.
Discussion?
I need a second.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Ochsinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
I abstain.
I'd like to move item 12 under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Ochsinski?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Policy, Mrs. Romeo's not here tonight. Jay, would you want to move that one?
Second.
Discussion? This is the second reading.
Yes.
Roll call?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ochsinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Policy, Mrs. Romeo's not here tonight. Jay, would you want to move that one?
Second.
Discussion? This is the second reading.
Yes.
Roll call?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ochsinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Negotiations? Second.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Negotiations? Second.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Committee reports, Parks and Recreation, Jay, is there any? Do you know if there's...
We're working on something to get touch done to figure out when it's going to start.
We do have a meeting coming up on the second where we're going to be meeting with the mayor and the Parks, the rec director. So maybe we can open up a little conversation with them about that.
Is that March 2nd?
Yes, March 2nd, Monday.
That's Dr. Seuss Day.
I know, but we have that in the morning. Maybe Dr. Seuss will come?
I'm going to read.
Okay. Yeah, maybe he could come. That would be great. On January 31st, they discussed the new Alissa's Law and the panic buttons that will be installed into the schools. They talked about the subplans and the coverage for the buildings. The next one, I do not know when that is. So Superintendent's Roundtable?
We have a meeting Thursday, and I'll be back. So I'm coming.
You were here. You want to do the report?
Oh, I'm sorry, Nicole.
Nicole, you weren't at the...
No, maybe I was.
I think that was me. I'm sorry. Yes, we have one this Thursday. I don't know. Okay. Passaic County School Board, I don't have a report. New Jersey School Boards, we were in contact with New Jersey School Boards and the dates for this planning. One will be March 31st. The second one is April 29th. And the third one would be May 19th.
Education Committee, you have Hunger Free Students Bill of Rights, A 1104, basically per... ...motivating students with bills and arrears, meal access, says schools are not required ...on free or reduced meals. It basically... ...upperheaded shaming students with bills and arrears. And schools take certain action to increase participation in free and reduced meals. Then there's A, Assembly 1632, School Meal Fund, how schools establish a meal fund to assist students with meals and arrears. Then the Senate Education Committee, S 108, Rights of Student Journalists, concerning free speech rights of student journalists at public schools. Then S 237 and S 854 deal with civic instruction, basically to bolster civic instruction in the school, which is probably a good thing. S 311, Student Tardiness prohibits the school district from denying admittance to a student due to tardiness or violation of dress codes. S 316, Dropout Prevention, very obvious. S 692, Feminine High Gene Products, requires certain districts to provide these free. S 1028, Amistad Commission, also the, you know, education about African-Americans' contributions to American society. And then S 1032, Comprehensive Eye Exams, further, more eye exams for children. Under the Senate Budget Appropriations Committee, S 228, Incentivizing Electric School Buses. That sounds kind of interesting. I think school buses would be a good thing. They're limited distance and so it would probably reduce a lot of maintenance. S 969, Teacher Loan Redemption Program, certain, basically get certain teachers in low-performing schools, incentivize them to go there, help them with loans they may have. Senate Urban, Senate Community Urban Affairs Committee... Property taxes, where a town may get that, they have to share more with the school board. I'm not sure where that stands right. So that's bills that are in committee right now, might be coming down the pike.
Thank you. Any questions?
And just an update, the governor's budget address was today, so we should have our stated figures by the end of the week.
Technology, Mr. Corrigan, I was not here. Is there another meeting scheduled for technology?
We have one on the books for March, in the March.
Townships and Board of Education Joint Committee Meet. I did state we have one coming up on March 2nd. We also had a very productive meeting last month and discussion about the turf field and also about... West Milford Municipal Alliance?
That's me.
I'm sorry. I'm used to looking at you.
So they had two Rutgers pre-med students. They were really, really smart and had a lot to inform all of us on ways to help people through the crisis. They talked about lessing the stigma and helping them with their family and supporting when needed. They also taught... ...med students. And perhaps doing a stigma-free fun run in Waybiana Park on May 9th.
Do you know when your next meeting is?
I don't. I bet Mrs. Romeo does that. And...
I think it's the second Monday. She's on the ninth, maybe?
Right. Usually she sends out an email like three people.
Old business? Any questions on the budget? Anybody have anything?
So before we got it there, updated?
Yes. I provided at your place, I updated this. There's sectioned off that one, put them in book by section. We tried to make it as easy as possible. I can say that once we get our state aid numbers at the end, there will be revisions to this to... ...our state aid, notice the gap shouldn't be that onerous. So I've got my fingers crossed. The budget that the governor is sending to the legislature is not going to totally beat us up, although I have my doubts. And he has some pretty ambitious programs in his speech, and we'll see whether or not that actually comes to pass. One of my biggest concerns is the health benefit contribution that supports our budget and what will happen if they eliminate or modify that provision of law. So I'll just have to see how it all plays out, and we'll do our best to make it all work and keep programs intact for students. That's our job.
I do have one question. Psychologists have a salary, and under that, they also have a stipend.
That's part of their contract.
Why do they...
It's been in there forever.
Oh, I haven't noticed.
I think it doesn't apply to new people.
Correct. Oh, it doesn't? Okay.
That's correct. Picture at the next meeting and questions will, if there are questions about the budget and where Barbara will have a better answer for us, like tax impact and all that, once we see those numbers.
Well, yeah. On March 10th, there'll be a presentation of the budget. We'll have all our numbers for state aid. And we'll be able to explain to you what's in from the initial, what's out, and what the tax impact is going to be. And that is the budget that has to go down to the county office for approval. And then that's what gets publicized in the newspaper. But we have our public hearing in April, at the end of April. Any modifications that need to be made can be made from March until the end of April if the board sees fit. And we just work with whatever we have to work with.
...most of the public will be, and just rightfully so, everybody understand that that budget that will adopt that may... As Barbara said, we will be able to adjust that.
What will this week?
So we don't have committee that week?
And then the committees are on the 17th.
Okay. All right. I have it down.
Yeah, I thought I had it that way, too.
Just have a comment that there might be a glimmer of hope for this region with the legislature, kind of tax-wise. I was kind of surprised to see recently Senator Sweeney at the Senate proposing a rural enterprise zone similar to urban enterprise zones. Coming from the Democrat side of the table, Senator Penati over a decade now has proposed something similar to that, and it just died. About a year ago, I wrote something through the Economic Development Commission, basically paralleling all that. Within it, I can see that there would be basically reduces sales taxes, urban enterprise zone, the municipal town, cities get some of the sales tax back. I can see that provision in Sweeney's bill, but at least we're getting looked at up here. There is some hope because, you know, the towns in this area, some of the biggest hits on the cuts of school funding, so.
Yeah, I think it was to bring it down to like 4.5 or something like that.
Urban enterprise zones, a cut in half of this is, yeah, it's going to reduce about 2% of the sales tax, be some incentives for businesses, not everything, like a break on like the unemployment tax and some other incentives. But again, nothing that's installed, but it is nice to see something being looked at after years and years and years of nothing. So I keep my fingers closed.
Wouldn't it be nice if we got the difference?
Yeah, it would be nice, yeah.
Any other discussion about the budget? If not, any old business?
Make a motion to close open.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. New business? All those in favor of closing new business? Aye. Public comment? I'm distracted.
Same rules apply as before, but this is on any item.
Okay. Under the public comment, the same rules as were read before. The only difference is that you can speak on any item you wish in regards to the school district. Anybody wishing to speak under public comment?
Seeing none, I make a motion to close the public comment.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Do we need a motion for executive session, Dave?
Okay. At 8:08, I want to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters. Privilege.
We will be returning for action.
Right. And we shouldn't be on...
We need a second.
We need a second, too.
Should we...
Forty minutes?
Yeah, at least forty minutes.
Okay.
We'll return in forty minutes.
Thank you.
That's a lot of hits.
It is a lot of hits. I kind of survived.
Roll call, Barbara? Please do that. You can... This is Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Stiller?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mrs. Fritz?
Here.
Mr. Ochsinski?
Here.
Mr. Conklin? Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Okay. I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to affirm and reject the following hibs. 2020 H 8 substantiated, 2020 M 4 unsubstantiated, 2020 E 11 unsubstantiated, 2001, I'm sorry, 2020 H 9 substantiated, 2020 H 10 unsubstantiated, 2020 E 9 unsubstantiated, 2020 E 10 unsubstantiated, 2020 E 12 substantiated, 2020 E 13 substantiated, and 2020 H 11 substantiated.
I need a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? It's not roll call, but... Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Ochsinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mrs. Dinkley?
Yes. Need a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn? 9:04.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Good night.
Good night.
Yep.